Good evening. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager for the city of Falls Church. Thank you all for coming tonight. Tonight's purpose is to gather public input and get information out also on the closed library renovation and expansion. Before we get started, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Tarter to make a welcoming remarks as well.
Thank you very much. I don't have a whole lot to say other than, A, thank you for coming out. This is obviously a topic of great interest. We appreciate you coming out tonight. We want to hear what you have to say. What we have going forward is a vote on Monday, a scheduled vote on Monday. That's not to approve or disapprove, it's really just to put it on the ballot in November. So the idea is that this ultimately will be decided by you all, members of the general public, in November. But we do welcome public comment at that time, so you're certainly welcome to speak your mind tonight. But if you'd like to do it again on Monday, or on the record, or whatever you might want to do, you're welcome to attend our meeting. We take public comment at the beginning of the meeting and also when the item is heard. So you'll have many opportunities to speak at that point if you'd like to. But we love our library system. It's one of the best in Virginia. We want to thank all the folks involved with that. We do have some pressing other capital needs, and so I think you're going to hear an awful lot about all that tonight. What the reasons are for the library, and then also a little discussion about what else is on the plate. So with that, I guess I'll turn it back over to Wyatt. Thank you all again for coming out, and look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you. Oh, and I also want to, I forgot to introduce my two council colleagues who are here. Karen Oliver and I think Lenny Hardy is in the back. So say hello to them as well, and thank you all for coming.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Tarter.
I'm Mary McMahon.
Oh, that's right. So we have this meeting, it's being taped, and it will be rebroadcast on our local cable access channel, and it's also available on our city webpage through streaming. So we will have a microphone, and that's really what the purpose of that is, is for our audience at home. Mary McMahon is our Director of Libraries. Mary, could you come forward and introduce yourself, and also introduce our library board members?
Okay. I'm Mary McMahon. And we have a number of board members here tonight. The Chair of the Library Board is Brad Gernan. He's located here. Vice Chair is Chet DeLonge. And Don Camp is a board member. Stephanie Oppenheimer, Teri Zawaki, and Ed Rose. And Jeff Peterson is back in the back there. So we thank you all for coming as well tonight.
So we're going to do sort of a 1-2 on this presentation tonight. Mary is the star of the show. She'll give the presentation that you're really here to get tonight. But I wanted to provide just a bit of introduction, a little bit more greater context in terms of how the library project fits in with the larger capital improvements program, because we do have significant lifts that we need to make as a community for our capital program. So I have just a few slides, and it'll take me just about five minutes to go through them. And then our intent is to, between the two of us, we have about 20 minutes of information we want to convey to you, and then after that it will be questions, responses, any comments you'd like to make. Okay? So a little bit on the process. The Mary Riley Stiles Library Renovation and Expansion has been part of the city's capital improvements program now since 2006. So for 10 years, we've been working through various different space needs analysis and...
Turn that off.
We've been doing studies, and we've done the space needs analysis, and we've had several versions of that, and a lot of sort of back and forth with the library board, the city council, the planning commission, and a number of public meetings that have really gotten us to this point. And where we are now is that the adopted capital improvements program that the city council approved in April calls for architecture and engineering for the project to be in FY '18. That begins July 17. And the construction to occur in FY '19, and that would be beginning in July of 2018. So that's our plan for moving forward if this is approved by the voters at a public referendum. And as the mayor just noted, on July 25th, i.e. next Monday, the city council will vote on whether or not to schedule a voter referendum, and that would occur on November 8th, 2016. So some of the context for our capital improvements planning, we do have significant projects in our capital plan, and I think everyone is aware of that, but I think it's important for the community to know as we're considering these individual projects about what the bigger picture is. Of course, the high school, what is approved in the capital improvements program, is $112 million project. We have City Hall Public Safety and Access Improvements, which has $10.5 million of additional funding for that project. The project that we're talking about tonight will be on the ballot for the referendum at $8.7 million for expansion and renovation. We also have assorted other projects in the CIP. $4 million for land acquisition, as an example, and other transportation and park improvements totaling $8.1 million that would be debt financed over the five years of the planning period. So that's a lot to handle. And if you look at what this means in terms of the annual debt service, this is significant for us. And so what this chart shows, and if you've been to any of the town hall meetings we've had on the school project, you've seen this chart before. But what it shows is the blue stacks, which form the base of this chart, is our existing debt service. So if you go out year over year, that, our existing debt starts to come off of our books. Some of the big significant ones out in 2025, you see that big step down. That's because the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School is coming off of our books in that year, just as an example. The Y-axis in this chart are in $2 million increments, so the first is what our existing debt service today is just under $6 million per year. Now with the City Hall project, the land acquisition, the various park projects, and the library project, those projects alone would increase our annual debt service by $2 million, from $6 million a year to just over $8 million a year. And the green slice of this chart is the share that's dedicated to the Mary Riley Stiles Library expansion. So that's its slice of the overall CIP. The big red on top is the George Mason High School project, and that's our big lift. And that's, we're going to have much more community discussion over the coming months as we're planning that project in terms of ways and means, and also costs for that project. But this simply reflects today what is in the adopted CIP. And then that line, which is the purple line, that is the 12% policy limit. So what that policy limit stands for is that as a best practice, the city should not exceed 12% of its total budget for debt service. That's a pretty common metric that's used in terms of the overall affordability of your capital plan. So obviously, we do punch through that limit when we take on the high school project. And so we'd have at least five years in terms of the assumptions that are built into this slide where we'd exceed that policy. And policy aside, these are major issues in terms of what the impact is on the taxpayer and our overall affordability and sustainability as a city. So in terms of, if we want to translate this into cents on the tax rate and impacts on your average homeowner in the city, this is a chart that attempts to do that. So the George Mason High School project, I have listed this in this chart as being a cost of 5 to 15 cents on the tax rate. And the reason there's such a range is that one of the big variables is what, if we do have some of the land up there on the high school site going for economic development, to what extent can that reduce the impact on the tax rate? There are a lot of unknowns in that, but in terms of our basic modeling, we think that is a reasonable range with a whole host of assumptions behind it. The City Hall project represents 2 cents on the tax rate. The library project, 1.7 cents on the tax rate. And then we have the other ones listed there as well. So if you take your average house, which we're saying is $700,000, it's very close to what the average house is valued in the city. The library project would constitute about $119 per year annual cost to service the debt for the expansion and renovation that we're talking about with this project. That's in the context of potentially $770 up to $1,400 impact on the average homeowner, again with the big swing happening in terms of what we ultimately end up doing on the high school project. So these slides are intended just to give a little bit of a bigger picture. The intent of tonight really is now to provide more focus on what we're trying to accomplish with the Mary Riley Stiles Library project, and so we'll now shift to talk more about that. But again, the next steps, next Monday, the council will consider the question of putting this on the ballot for a public referendum. And then if approved, you would vote on it on November 8th. And then if that is approved, we would move forward with architecture and engineering in 2017. We would issue the bonds at the end of the planning process, but prior to construction, and then construction would occur in 2019. That is what's envisioned in the adopted capital plan. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Mary McMahon. She will present information on the library project itself, and then we'll have questions and answers. And let me shift over to the other...
Let's see if I can, do you want to do this or hold that? If it stays there, you can stand and not have to hold it.
Okay.[702.32][702.32](Laughter).
Assuming no one trips over the cord. And there's the clicker.
Okay, and I use that?
That's right.
Okay. Hello. Now that we have some of the housekeeping done, first of all, welcome. I'd like to give you a little bit of information. This will be brief. There is far more detail on the library's website. It actually has the actual studies there that you can read in detail, but this is kind of an overview. In addition to that, we also have architectural boards that are located up here, giving you some ideas of what conceptually it could possibly look like, okay? So we'll go ahead and get started. We're going to talk a little very briefly about some of the previous expansions that have taken place with the library, and then what's actually happening with the library currently in terms of demand and the services that we provide. We will then look very briefly at the renovation and addition and what's proposed with it, and then give you a summary, and then we'll be glad to take questions and answers. Just as a brief background, some of you probably have never known that the library has been in a lot of different places over the years. It actually started in 1899, and I know some of you don't remember that, but it did. And just as an aside, there was no heat in that building. There was a fireplace. And so the women's club, who established the library here in town, they brought sticks and wood to put in the fireplace so that they could save money to buy books. So that's how dedicated, and they started the library with 500 books. Of course, where we are today is located down there in the lower right-hand corner. The circulation desk at one time, that's in the 60s, if you, or, yeah. So the land was actually given to the city in 1953 by the Stiles family, and there was a covenant on that land, and there were two requirements. One was that it must always be a public library, and that, two, that public library must be built in a Williamsburg-style building, okay? The original building was built in 1958, and for those of you who may not know this, it was the first public library in Northern Virginia that was built specifically as a library. So that's a claim to fame. It was 10,000 square feet when it was first built, and then the first addition was then put in in 1967. Many of you would recognize that the bowed window in the children's area and the steps in that area, those are what were added in 1967. And then there was a renovation in 1992 that added 3,400 square feet to bring the building to a little over 18,000 square feet, and that was the last renovation. Currently, there are 15 parking spaces that are dedicated to the library. There are seven on the side of the library, and then there are eight on the street, two of which are dedicated to handicapped, okay? So just to give you an idea of what's happening in the library these days, we have a lot of people that come through the library, over 300,000, and we have about 29,000 registered borrowers. Of that, about 10,500 of them are city residents, so it's a little, almost 80% of the citizens have library cards. I will tell you that that's the highest in the state in terms of per capita. In addition to that, our circulation is almost 470,000 items. Our collection is at maximum, it's 144,000, and we, it really, right now, depends on a certain amount of books being out at all times. About a third of the collection has to be out at all times in order for it to be, to fit. So program attendance is breaking all records. We're at over 28,000 people a year, and we present over, almost 800 programs a year. Answer about a little over 67,000 questions. And for those of you who may know, Library Journal has provided a star system in the United States, and we have won it every year that it has been presented. We are one of only two libraries in the state of Virginia that has won it every year. So kudos to the staff. Just to give you an idea of some of the varied things that we do, we have pause-to-read, we have Legos for kiddos, we have story hours three times a week, and you can see a story hour there that's pretty full. Population growth in the city, as you can see, has steadily grown since 1940, since, excuse me, 1994. There's been a 44% increase in population. And by the year 2033, it's projected that there'll be between 15,000 and 17,000 people here in the city. We are currently a little over 13,500 people. And as I said, almost 80% of the people have library cards with us here in the city. We are consistently going up in terms of the number of people using us. Library visits are up 49%. Circulation is up 37%. Registered borrowers up 26%. And really, library services, the demands for those services are out, going faster than the population growth of the city. This is a lot of verbiage, but basically what it does is give you an idea of how we have gotten to where we were, or where we are today, and Wyatt alluded to this. We started back in 2005, 2006. We were part of the DUBERRY Study, the feasibility study for City Hall, and they tacked us on at the end of it and looked at what we were doing and what the projections for the growth of the city were and that kind of thing. And their recommendation back in 2005 was for a 33,000-square-foot facility in a leased facility in the town center. I don't know how many of you all remember the idea of the town center. That was not approved. So then, we waited a little bit longer, and in 2010, we decided that we would try, if at all possible, to buy some property that was very close by and expand the library that way. And so we put, we asked for $6.75 million for land acquisition and construction. That was denied. However, at that time, the planning commission recommended that we get $2 million and try to get the right of first refusal for the purchase of some property, and then go from there. So in '11 and '12 and '13, we continued to put forward the $6.75 million for not only the purchase, but expansion of the library each time it was denied. But the $2 million did stay in there, okay, to see if we could purchase land. And that did not happen either, because the person decided they did not want to sell. So finally, we undertook an RFP and engaged the services and created a library master plan. And the services that they looked at, they looked at staffing, they looked at the size of the collection, they looked at the services that we do, the facility issues, all of those kinds of things. And then they looked at how the population was growing, what the changes and trends in libraries were, all of those kinds of things. And at the end of the study, they recommended a 33,000-square-foot facility that would cost $17.7 million. And the, so the option that was chosen by the library board to bring forward would have raised the current building, and if parking had been created underneath the building, it would have been $18.9 million. Neither of those two options were chosen or approved. However, the planning commission and council agreed that $8 million be set aside, and they said, "Go back to the drawing board. Let's figure out what you can get for $8 million." So we re-engaged the architectural firm that was part of the original study in 2012, and they came up with the two options that you see before you tonight. An east option and a west option for the cost of $8.3 million. Now during the course of that large study for the master plan, we had a series of public meetings. We talked to a lot of people, different age groups, different interests, that kind of thing, and said, "What do you want from your public library? What do you want to see it be like?" Well, they want a friendly atmosphere. They want a human scale. They want it cozy. They want those molyne windows, and they want the window seats. They want to continue to have a great collection, and they want the present location because it's very walkable. It's easy to get to. It's the center of town. There's a synergy between the farmer's market and the park and the city hall. And they want a green building, one that's efficient, that really pays its own way, so to speak. And then they wanted larger meeting rooms, places for people to have programs, to learn things, to study, to be tutored. And then they wanted a meeting place for the citizens. And we have become that. Saturday morning, after the farmer's market, there are a lot of folks in the library meeting each other. So what the second plan came up with when we went back and said, "We only have $8 million. What can we get for that?", the architect decided, he costed things out, and what he said we could afford for that would be a 6,600-square-foot addition and a renovation of the existing building, okay? And all of this would be public space. What would it entail? Well, it would be a larger children's room, young adult room, meeting space, a community room kind of thing where programs could be held. It would move the entryway from currently, which, on Virginia Avenue, to the Park Avenue side of the building. And it would be ADA compliant, the building would be. It would be more energy efficient. It would be enlarged, we would get enlarged public restrooms, and a new public elevator. Okay? So what are the two options? The first option I'm showing you is a rendering of the west, excuse me, moving the addition out to the west. In other words, over toward the Virginia Avenue side. So there would be 3,300 square feet on the first floor and 3,300 square feet on the second floor. And the entryway, as you can see, is on Park Avenue. That's the main road right here, okay? And then the second one is moving the option over to the east side, and that would be on the side of the building closest to the medical building, if you're familiar with the library's location. Again, the entryway would be on Park Avenue. Okay? What are some of the benefits of both of those options? Well, for the west side, it preserves the onsite parking, those seven spaces that we have alongside the building. And it creates more interior daylight. It has better sightlines. In addition to that, it retains the alleyway and the drive-through book drop that people have told us is very important. And also, it creates better sightlines, as I said, for supervision. What about the east option? The east option has some benefits as well. First of all, it preserves the green space that's on the west side of the building, okay? But you lose all of the parking, dedicated parking on that side of the building. You lose the alleyway on that side of the building, but you are closer to the possibility of shared parking, which we are looking at with a neighbor. So in both cases, depending on which option is chosen, the library would remain open during the project with the exception of approximately three weeks. And that would be when they actually join the addition to the current building and make some changes along those lines. And so it would be three weeks, two weeks together in one time and one week in another time, so. And what would it do? Well, the renovation of the current building would provide upgraded and new air conditioning and heating in the building. And it would also, the building would be in compliance with the ADA or American with Disabilities Act. We would enlarge the public restrooms, and it would improve the plumbing, and you'd get better lighting that is more cost-efficient. And finally, it would be upgraded with better electrical and data wiring. The costs. The actual cost of construction is $6,465,299, and that is $234 a square foot for the addition and the renovation. Furnishings are a little over 60, it's $677,000. Professional compensation, that's the architect and all of those folks, $900,000. Administrative costs are things like permitting and that kind of thing. $330,000 for a total cost of $8.3, or almost $8.4 million. When you add in the cost of the bonding fees, it brings it up to an $8.7 million project. As I mentioned earlier, if you want to see all of the details, the timelines are there about how long it would take to build, when the library might be closed, that kind of thing, you can see that in the library master plan that is filed on the library's website. So it also gives a very detailed cost analysis, how much an elevator is, how much, you know, tiles in the bathroom are, and all that kind of stuff, so. So in summary, what you need to understand is that it provides new public space, and it preserves the exterior. It would look the same. It would just have a different entryway, but it would still have the arches. It would improve the interior space so that it is more work-efficient. It also works better in terms of electrical and those kinds of things. In addition to that, as I mentioned earlier, it capitalizes on the synergy of the civic campus being close to City Hall and the park and farmer's market and the community center. campus being close to city hall and the park and farmer's market and the community center. It remains walkable, it remains open during the construction, it's an affordable cost. And the other thing is, it maintains that community feel that people feel very, very strongly about when they talked with us about the project. So of course, the staff recommendation is, and this is something that would go forward, this is the recommendation that council received from us on the last meeting, and we'll hear it again on Monday, is that they pass the ordinance 16-12 that would authorize the issuance of bonds in the amount of $8.7 to renovate it and to place the question on the ballot if it passes. It would then have the bond. So that's kind of where we are. We hope that we can answer questions and be glad to entertain that.
New elevator.
The new elevator, yes, we need a new elevator. That would be provided as well. Thank you.
Mr. Janan, did you want to say anything? I'll just hear the questions.
If you want to speak.
Let me introduce Cindy Mester is assistant city manager. She is our lead staffer, putting together our capital improvement program, so she will be here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Well, I think the plan looks great. I just have one particular question, is if you go east, what happens to the, how do you get out of the parking lot?
If we go east, you lose the parking lot. There would be no alleyway, which is a concern because it creates, one, there is no way through for your drive-through book drop, but it also creates some problems for emergency vehicles if you needed to have fire engines, they'd have to come in at the lower half of that alleyway. Trash also would be a difficult thing. So you would lose those.
So with the questions and answers, if you could just introduce yourself and where you live, as we do at council meetings, and then hopefully we can hit the mic to everybody.
This is, okay. Hello. Johanna Barry, 111 East Jefferson Street, Falls Church. I actually had a series of questions, and I don't want to hog the mic, so maybe I'll ask one and then see if anybody else has a question, and two and three. I'm interested in ADA compliance because I worry about that both here at city hall and also at the library. When we talk about ADA compliance, we're talking about a functional elevator, go team. We're talking about stack height and stack width.
That's correct.
As well. And frankly, is the library and is the city at risk because we haven't been ADA compliant?
Actually, I'm going to turn that over to Cindy because she's our ADA officer, and she would be able to answer that better than I.
Currently not because of the time in which the previous renovations were, but this minute we start renovations, you need to bring it to ADA compliant. Now, the city has adopted policy to comply with the letter of law and the spirit of the law, and currently, the library would not meet the spirit of the law. And we'd have to provide quite a bit of reasonable accommodations for anybody needing something from the top stacks down, or if they couldn't get between the stacks because they're not all wide enough for a wheelchair width.
And I should say, the first speaker is sort of a special guest star for us because she's Mary's predecessor, Dean Dirksen, who was director of the library for a number of, for many years during the 1994 addition. So she has a lot of institutional knowledge to contribute.
And I will just add that when we did that building, we thought that we were then in compliance. It wasn't that we didn't know about the need for it.
A lot of the guidelines and regulations have evolved since the 1991 adoption of the law.
I'm Ellen Salisbury at 502 West Broad, which is of course, walking distance to the library. I'm concerned about the fact that even though this renovation is set up to add a certain number of square feet to the library, it's really not enough. So what I'm curious about is, in the current construction plans, is there any thought being given to future expansion, future addition to the library that would not involve the problems that the library has currently now about adding to what's there?
I would say yes, to a certain degree. The addition would be built so that additional stories could be put on top of it. In fact, there was discussion on the board about the possibility of, if there was any way to get an extra million dollars for a floor that was not finished, so that it could be later adopted, you know, adapted. And even the idea of renting it out to another agency until such time as the library needed it. So that's there. And then, of course, there's always, whatever side is not chosen, choosing that for another addition.
Thank you. Ira Kaylin, 429 Park Avenue. Mary's already covered extremely well the benefits of a library. I personally am a strong supporter, it's the civic center of the city, it's the only civic center or civic area really you have that has these features, which most jurisdictions would kill to have a library, a Cherry Hill Park type, and a city hall adjoining each other as a real civic center. And we should have both and everything flourish and be the best we can afford. Separate and different, on the finances, Wyatt, if you could pull up your chart. The numerical, when you're a graph guy, I'm a numbers guy. This particular chart is actually not accurate because it overstates the tax rate impact of the city hall, excuse me, the library compared to the George Mason. The George Mason is a 30-year loan, a 30-year obligation, and the way you structured it, it is to minimize the yearly cost. Now, the total cost of it over 30 years is $34 million more than if you use the same technique that you're going to use for the library. So the library costs, if you did it the way you're doing city hall, would be even lower. So you have to normalize the two. You can't compare a project that's funded over 30 years with a project that is funded over 20 years. And they have, one is a mortgage style, which is much more expensive, which is the school technique you're going to use, and the other is a technique which runs down the interest cost. So I don't know how you actually came to the 1.7. I don't know if that was the first year, or at the end, or the average, really hard to say. But this chart overstates the cost of the library in comparison to the George Mason school. That has to be adjusted if you're going to get an accurate view of what the relative costs are of the two projects.
I think that's a point well taken. And I would characterize it as, it doesn't overstate the library cost, but it understates the school cost because of the reasons that you've listed. We're trying to structure, what I'm presenting here is the result of a lot of different iterations of modeling, and this is trying to make the school project as affordable as possible on an annual debt service basis. And so everything that the city debt, bond funds, we typically do 20-year bonds, and we structure it as level principal. That means your debt service tends to taper down over time, and that's a good thing. That frees up capacity for future capital. The school, on the other hand, because it's so big, we're structuring it as a 30-year bond with level debt service. That means it would just be sort of the flat amount out like your mortgage is for 30 years. So I think that's a point well taken.
If you really want to, you can do it either way, either everything is done on 30 years or everything is done for comparison purposes. And on the $4 million for the land acquisition, that really is a school expense. So it really is, should have been added to current, rather the, you know, school expenses, just school expenses, to get a mortgage, that's not for a separate land. Anyway, there's, there are other technical issues which I will spare the audience at the moment.
And I should note also, on this, the graphical presentation and discussions with the budget and finance committee, they have asked that this chart in the future be presented as, with the school, as 20-year debt, the way we finance everything else, so that you really can sort of see it that way. Now, that's a really, that's a very dramatic, this is a pretty dramatic graph as it is, but if you show it that way, it even more so. So again, I think it's a point well taken.
Johanna, again. And I should say that if it isn't obvious, I'm a huge fan of the library, I'm a huge fan of this referendum. I will do, you know, whatever it takes to make sure that the rest of the residents of the city of Falls Church support the library, support this referendum. I think it's extraordinarily important, not only for the city, but for the surrounding jurisdictions, because we forget that it's not just Falls Church, but that this is a jewel in northern Virginia. Okay, enough of that. All right, let me put the cheaters on, as my brother would say. In the expansion, do you anticipate additional ongoing costs that the city should anticipate, given the larger physical structure that gets built or baked in, as folks want to say, into the budget due to the larger infrastructure? And do you anticipate more staff or staff costs associated with the expansion?
We do not anticipate additional staff in a one location. And in terms of operating costs, there will be increases certainly in things like heating and air conditioning because you've got an expanded size. But in terms of, we have built that in, and I did give a projection of approximately how much we thought that might be.
There will be some offset to reduce energy costs from the inefficient building and high maintenance costs for elevators and HVAC, because that right now is pretty significant trying to keep the infrastructure going at the library.
Johanna, another part of that question, the answer would be, one of those two, like temporarily blanking on which one it is, but allows for better supervision sightlines?
The west.
The west, the west side rather than the east side. So we tend to prefer, I think, the west side simply because that would help the staff stay at the same size and be able to do what they do now, because they can see wherever it is they need to see.
In addition to that, with the west side, it creates less demolition of the current building when you're doing the renovation. On the east side, there is more demolition of the current building in order to, you've got to rework areas that don't need reworking in the west side.
And this is the west side, so afterwards you can look at the layout.
And please remember, those are conceptual plans, so that, for instance, like the floor plan is drawn out, but that's just, we were trying to make sure that we could get everything that we really, really felt was necessary in there. And so walls are very easy to move when they're just drawings.
And for those of you for whom the look and feel is important, the architects tell us that we can easily preserve the Williamsburg-style architecture. So if we renovated like this, you'd still have the bonded brick and the water table around the brick and the hipped roof and slate roof, all that kind of thing.
Thank you. Donald Camp, I live at 134 North Fairfax Street. I'm a member of the school board, but, excuse me, the library board, but speaking in my personal capacity. Mary has made a very good case for the renovation, and it sounds like a lot of support here. The issue before the city council on Monday is whether to authorize the bond referendum this November. And I understand there's some sentiment on the council to put it off a year. I would just make an appeal that we need to have a chance to vote on it this year. Besides the fact that interest rates are very low now, they may not go up, but they may. This is a good time to build. It's been in the capital budget for, I think, 10 years. It's been studied frankly to death. We have a very good proposal, two proposals on the table. I think we're ready to go. There's no reason, in my view, to delay the project a year by not having a referendum in November. So that's my appeal to the city council to move forward.
Tina Erman on Nolan Street. I think on one of the PowerPoints it said, how many square feet you would end up with after the remodeling and addition? How many square feet, how many square feet will we end up with after the remodeling is done?
The current, the current size of the building is 18,100. We would be adding 6,600, so that's 24.7 square feet, thousand square feet.
I have a question. You've emphasized the addition of public space that's needed, but I know also from my experience of being on the library board, that working space for the staff is very limited and crowded. Does the new, do the new plans include additional workspace?
Not a great deal of additional workspace, but a great deal of reworked current workspace so that it's more efficient.
No, I haven't heard anything about the parking deck. Is that moved? And then, is the addition on the top contingent upon one of the additions happening, one of the expansions happening in one direction or the other? My concern about that is, that brick is so difficult to match. And sort of morphing the building around your needs is kind of hard, so I'm wondering how difficult and how expensive is it to go ahead and build up?
Quite frankly, we have just costed out 6,600 square feet because that is what we were told that there, it might pass. And so an additional square footage would be, if we added another level to that, that would be another 3,300 square feet if you went up just one story or one more level. And it could be on either side, but it was, I mean, it can be on either side, depending upon which side is chosen.
And the part of which side is chosen will be based on some additional studies of engineering, civil engineering, soul borrowing, and community input. So that's why there are still two options on the table. For the parking deck that Ms. Rita referenced, in the adopted CIP, there is a proposed parking deck that would be partnered with the medical building next door to add a second level deck and add about 55 spots. That's about $3.4 million, so it's a pretty expensive solution for parking in this campus area. So what council has directed staff to do is pursue first some shared parking agreements, some formal parking districts with, for example, 313 Park Avenue, the office building next door, or the medical building on Little Falls across from city hall, and see if we can utilize spots because they're often underutilized when we need to use them and get a shared agreement. Also, as part of the city hall, Public Safety and Access Improvement Project, there will be an additional deck, parking garage and deck added here for police vehicles and city vehicles, which would net somewhere around 44 additional public spots here on the campus. So we will kind of want to reassess what shared parking and better parking and flow on this land before we proceed with the CIP. They are two separate projects, so that's also why tonight you're not hearing a discussion about the parking, because it's a separate project running sort of parallel, but not part of the library expansion or renovation.
Just, actually, this is aimed for the library board, not for the city, and maybe for some of the council members that are here. If you look at the numbers, the community, there are some in the community who are going to say, why are we spending any money or so much money on a library when we have all the school expenses to take care of and all the other stuff? The school expenses are what they are. If we don't do the library expansion, it will have virtually no positive impact on the school, but will have a very negative impact on the city. So the important to not conflate the two borrowings and the two costs as if they were in the same orders of magnitude. Will not solve the costs of the city, of the schools by cutting back the expansion of the library. Very important to separate out those issues, anyway, I believe. Thank you.
We appreciate your sentiment because the public does certainly continue using us more and more every year. So we feel like we really have no choice but do something. And so, again, we appreciate your thought.
All right, we've got Ms. Rita in the back again. And then after that, maybe we'll just take one or two more questions if there are any, and then we'll be here, people can come to the boards and ask any additional follow-up questions getting close.
I read the, I read the RFP and the last proposal, and in their mission statement, it was about the architectural firm, not the library. This is what I think the mission statement for the library is. A library is the equalizer of society. It's a place where the homeless person can go and become an attorney. They can study and graduate from college on your computers if your prints are free. I've seen it done. They do that in Fredericksburg. That's why I value it so much. And I appreciate the library for that reason. Also, I believe there needs to be a separation between the pedestrian and the bicycle traffic going across Park Avenue and Virginia Avenue. Because when, when there's storytime, there's a woman who's getting ready to have another baby, and she's got twins, she's pushing across the street and three tagging behind her. We need to get them up on an elevated bridge so that we separate that from the traffic. That's my last comment.
And when you saw the, the boards that you see when you come into the lobby, those were drawn by Ms. Rita, I want to thank you for those and your thoughts on this project. Are there any other questions that we have for the group while we're together? If not, I did want to, yeah, Ms. Dirksen?
You talk about adding a third floor, I thought the building was not engineered as it is so that that could be done. Is that not right?
That would be only on the new portion that's being built.
Okay.
It would not be on the, that's correct.
I want to recognize council members Mary Beth Connolly and Duncan, who arrived. And Mayor Tarter, do you want to say anything in closing? And again, we'll stay up here in the front if there are any follow-up questions or discussion.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. I think, I think there's, plenty's been said, and I tell you, we're going to see you again Monday. If you'd like to say more than you've said tonight, come on out Monday. You're absolutely welcome to say your piece at city council. You're welcome to email us or contact us in any way you can. We're certainly interested in what you have to say. And ultimately, this will likely be for you guys to decide in November. So, anyway, thank you all for coming out.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right.